Welcome to the September 20th, or excuse me, welcome to the May 20th, 2021 Fiscal Year 22 Budget Review Special Meeting. If you will, if you'll bow your head with me and then we'll stand for our Pledge of Allegiance. Father, I thank you for this chance that we get to be together. Lord, I especially pray that you give us wisdom, that you give us guidance, you give us compassion, that you give us discernment to be able to make the decisions that are the best for the citizens in our, in our city. Lord, I thank you for how you've blessed us through this past year, that you've been able to guide us in, in making decisions that no one thought we would ever have to make. I thank you for living in such a blessed city and the people that we have here. Lord, be with us and bless us. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief folks, I hate to put you on the spot, see a lot of our fire and rescue team here, but I had the opportunity to be at a meeting this morning at 8:30 and I made a bunch of notes, but instead of me making an announcement, I think it'd be more fitting if you came and, and did that for us.
Yes, sir. The Commission on Fire Accreditation International, as, as councils aware, we've been pursuing accreditation for the last almost five years that we've been working on accreditation through that commission. And this morning, or this week, the peer assessment team came in, peer review team came in from that Commission on Fire Accreditation and reviewed our entire department, entire city overwhelmingly, of all, a lot of departments and a lot of different things within those realms of everything from finance to human resources to the way that we do operations within the fire department. And that peer review team, we're not completely there yet because we have to go to a hearing before the Commission on Fire Accreditation International, but the peer review team can make three recommendations. And a common recommendation is a deferral. They can deny you, which means you start the entire process all over again. That's not very common, but a common recommendation is deferral to get everything back in order over a period of time. And then the other recommendation that they can make is for you to go before the commission for accreditation. And I'm proud to say that due to the work of a lot of the staff within our fire department and a lot of the people sitting in this room with the fire department and a specialized team that we put together to do that, we have been referred over to the commission for accreditation. And, and so that should be happening either in June or July, that we'll be attending those hearings and hopefully become an accredited fire department.
Typically, y'all are supposed to stand up when we all come in the building, in, in the room, but not, just kidding. I made a bunch of notes from the meeting today, but there are a few things I wanted to make sure that as they were reading some of the, their findings in different categories. Category one, one of the things that they really struck, stuck out was strong governmental leadership in city management administration. One of the things that they said that they typically don't see is sound and very good fiscal policies in city budget. For our fire team, great domestic preparedness. Training, fire suppression was, they said, second to none. Technology, all kinds of different things that were really good. So Chief, when you get that report, I think it would be good for us to, to read over that and also see the opportunities that we have, but lots of good things to be able to move through. Hey, I have one, we're going to move into new business, which is our fiscal year 22 budget concerns, but we're going to ask real quickly, we've got, going to move up Evergreen Cemetery for a request, I think. Yes, come on up, Betty. So we'll, we'll get into our budget. Betty, before you start, Craig, do you want to, is there anything you want to kick off before we, we start our process?
No, you have the comments that are part of the budget process. And then after Betty speaks, then we'll turn it over to Erin and let her do her presentation.
Okay. All right, Betty, come on up.
There, I have a grandchild that has awards tonight, so thank you for letting me go first. My budget's simple this year. As usual, we expect about a two or three percent increase and hopefully my voice will, will last through this. We expect a bu, revenues of around $778,500 for, for the tentative budget for '21 and '22. Lot sales, right now at this point, they're about 220, same as last year. We have another quarter to go, so we expect that they'll, they'll be a little greater than, than last year. Our opening of graves are 215. Last year is what I've based this income on. We're at 223 right now, so we're over on grave openings at this point. Our perpetual care trust is, is doing well, even though the economy right now is not going as well as, as we thought it would. Our operating expenses stay about the same. We, we will have an increase in payroll this year due to the size of the cemetery getting a little larger. We're going to have to have more employees and, and groundkeepers, so we've increased that. You'll also see at the bottom, we've got new equipment. We will be replacing another mower this year with a, another zero-turn mower that is a rear discharge to keep the grass from hitting the stones and, and making a mess on those. We're trying to get all those replaced with the rear discharge. We will be adding a dump, not a new dump truck, but a nice huge dump truck this year. We are, we had a commission meeting yesterday and we are going to be upping our landscaping and trying to get the beautification of the cemetery and the landscaping and more inviting for everybody in our families. We'll be doing some paving this year. Our roads are kind of rough and, and we'll be doing some paving and maybe some seal coatings, so that's our projects for this year. We don't anticipate opening a new section. We opened a new section last year and it's filling up fast. As Murphysboro grows, we grow. Other than that, my budget's pretty simple. We, the auditors last year commended the commission and, and the staff for holding the expenses down. We got through COVID and things are starting to pick up more for us.
Any questions for Evergreen?
I have a comment, Mayor.
Sure.
First of all, Ms. Betty, you all do a fabulous job.
Thank you.
And you all are most, most gracious, gracious to the funeral homes and I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Council and Mayor, I think, well, this is something that we need to address. When the police building, when we started on the police building, some of the city staff went to Ms. Betty and they had put up a new fence. And they asked, could, they said, "We couldn't work. We needed more room to work." So they asked Ms. Betty and them, could they, could the city take down that fence they had just put up, which was a beautiful wrought iron fence. It was beautiful. And they said, "As soon as we finish the construction of the police building, we would put your fence back up." And that's been how many years ago? So...
2018.
So as a council member and to the fellow council members and you, Mayor, I feel like we should address that this year and make her whole. We did promise her to replace the fence. Now, they had to go on and put their fence back up because of looting and everything, so... But we still owed them that fence and I don't know if it's a motion or what, but I would like to see us reimburse them for the fence that we took down. Am I right on the facts, Ms. Betty?
It wasn't a wrought iron.
Okay.
It was a chain link fence.
Okay.
And it borderlined Greenland and down the side of the police building.
Right.
So it was a tall chain link fence with, with barbed wire. And when we, when I talked to the gentleman, the contractor there at the police building, we had told him, we, you know, had kind of agreed on what type of fence. And that's another project, maybe not this fiscal year, but next, that we would like to join that fence that was, that we put there and bring it all the way down Greenland Drive there. And that's about $65,000, so we're, we're planning, we've got that in the future too to do. So we would like to, to match the fence that we had to replace back that...
The fence that we took down to do our construction and you replaced it, what's the value of that fence?
It cost us $6,966 to replace it.
I don't disagree with replacing the fence, but my question is, this may be a stupid question, but if we give money to Evergreen and we approve y'all's budget, aren't we just paying from ourself to ourself when we do that? I mean, one way or another, we, does it matter how we do that? I'm asking y'all, I guess.
It would just be a transfer to Evergreen.
Okay.
We don't normally give them money during the year, so this would be a new transfer.
We're self-supporting, yeah. We're self-supporting.
Was it the developer that did it? I mean, the, the builder that did it, or did we said, I mean, the city said, "We need more space," or?
The contractor came and one of the men, I can't remember his name, at the police department came and met with myself and the superintendent at the time and asked us, you know, told us they were going to put a fence down through there that was more of a privacy fence, because you could see through the chain link fence. So there's a privacy fence and then they put a brick pillar at one place to where the privacy fence comes up. And then the wrought iron fence would start from there, from the pillar and go out to Greenland Drive. From the pillar to Greenland Drive is what we had to replace. They, they didn't replace that part of it back.
I mean, $7,000, obviously it's all city, so I'm, you know, I'm, we ought to probably figure it out, but it probably seems like we need to make sure we aren't leaving money, I mean, that the developer should have, the developer should have taken care of or something like that. So I mean, why don't we just have staff make sure we get a little bit of, make sure detail on it and if we can get it from somebody else, let's get it from somebody else. If we need to recover it, we'll recover it. If it's us, let's do it.
They've already put the fence back up.
Yeah, but it's a matter of who reimburses the cemetery fund, I'm assuming, right? Either it's going to come from the city or it's going to come from the developer who took the fence down.
Right.
Is what I'm kind of getting at.
We can see who, who the contractor will, let staff check on it and then we can bring it back up next week.
And then if it's not, I mean, so we won't go, keep going around in circles. If it was not the contractor, then do we agree to reimburse them for that fence? I think we need to make them whole. If we promised them, we need to do that.
Can I ask a question, Ms. Betty? Have you requested being reimbursed for the fence, for the outlay that?
I think we did a couple of years ago at a, a board ma, a meeting, City Council meeting.
And did you replace the fence that you put back? Was it the same type of fence that was there?
No, sir. It was more of an ornamental type fence. The fence that was there was a green wrought iron fence, not a green wrought iron.
Green chain link.
Green chain link fence. We put a more, that correlated with, with what the, the police department put there.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's part of the conversation too. And, and I'm for making you hold, just so you understand, but not retroactively when we didn't have a part of the conversation. So, meaning in the difference, maybe would have, we would have chosen to do that, but I wasn't here and I wasn't part of that conversation, but principally I'm fine with it. I just...
Betty, yeah, it may be good if you will find out, we'll throw it, our staff will find out what happened, but maybe if you will find out the difference between what it would have cost to put a green chain link fence up, like what was there, and the difference between what y'all put up. And then whatever it would have cost for the older fence that was there, then that would be fair to reimburse, but...
I think the chain link fence is probably more than what we, more than what we put up there, to be honest.
I think it's a fair conversation.
That'd be fair.
Okay, all right.
It was, it was a lot taller than what we put up and then it had a three barbed wire where people couldn't climb over it.
Okay, yep. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Erin, we're going to turn it over to you.
All right, thank you. I'm just going to go over the highlights of next year's budget. Please feel free to jump in anytime if y'all have any questions or comments. So these last couple of years, we've really taken more of a continuous budget model approach versus a one-time annual budget. This includes constant review of our revenues and expenses. And then y'all are provided with monthly dashboard reports, which highlight key revenue and expense components. And then also you receive mid-year budget updates each January, just to kind of see how things are shaking out overall. And then we align our budget around council priorities, which are shown here. So we'll start with a look at next year's budget with revenues. And here's a look at property tax. You can see the chart on the left there shows where we're at on the budget this year, what we project for this year, and then next year's budget. And then the red line indicates the upward trend over, over the past two years. So property tax is our largest revenue source and we expect growth of about 4% this year, or next year. And also, this budget does not include a tax rate increase. The assessor will be assessing in '22, which will be part of our '23 budget. So local sales tax, as y'all know, has increased dramatically this year. Our budget amendment in November raised the budget from right around $42 million up to about $49.5, which was consistent with last year's results. Our results so far this year have exceeded by around 12.5% over last year. We originally, when the budget was printed, we were projecting about $53.7 million for this year's receipts. Based on information we received today, it looks like it could be closer to $55 million. So that's actually more than what we budgeted for sales tax for next year. And I know this is a conservative approach, but sales tax is highly sensitive and can fluctuate wildly, really depending on, on the economy and various circumstances. You know, and we'll continue to watch this throughout the year and update y'all monthly with the dashboard reports. State sales tax shows similar growth projections for this year. Again, you know, when, when we printed the budget, we were expecting about 6% to 7% increase. Right now, it's looking to be closer to 9% increase over last year. So again, next year's sales tax, for state sales taxes, projected relatively flat as compared to this year. And here's just a look at our other revenue categories, just across the board. The bar on the left for each category, again, is showing this year's budget. Then the middle bar is showing this year's estimated revenues. And then the one on the right is showing next year. So you can see pretty much across the board, they're relatively flat as compared to this year's budget, with the exception of grant revenues and land sales. That was just a really high overview of revenues. Are there any questions about that before I move into expenses? Okay. So y'all have a couple of printouts at your desk. One that shows a list of all the supplementals and one that shows the supplementals by priority. We'll talk about these at a high level, but if there are any items that you want more information or want to discuss further, just stop me at any time. So our supplemental request totaled about $8.3 million. And public safety tops those requests at 32%. Pay raises and medical premium increases make up 29% of our supplements. And then capital improvement and economic development account for another 21%. And we'll take a closer look at those next. So just like fiscal year '21, we were also notified for fiscal year '22 of a state grant that's intended to fund one-time expenses for things like public safety equipment and public infrastructure improvements of existing buildings and roads. These are shown as your Priority Zero items on your supplements. And the items that are shown here qualify for this grant and totals about $1.6 million. And that's balanced between revenues and expenses. So we have police equipment, which includes things like ballistics vests, body armor, mobile surveillance trailers and other equipment. We also have fire equipment, which includes equipment for emergency calls, medical calls, cardiac monitors, AEDs, training equipment and water rescue equipment. And then other improvements include roof repairs and door replacements at some of our older fire stations, as well as some road improvement projects. Our Priority One items are our high priority supplementals and typically include one-time costs and items that directly support council's budget priorities. And these items total close to $5.2 million. The largest of these requests is $2.2 million for pay raises, along with about $170,000 in medical premium increases. And on the next slide, I'll show you an example of these raises and the impact of the health insurance premium increase. So public safety positions total close to $1.1 million and include police positions and pay adjustments, including increasing overtime, adding two more crime data analysts and various pay adjustments for the communications and dispatch staff and crime data and crime scene technicians. In addition, fire rescue has requested three shift training medical safety officers. These positions will provide medical training to our firefighters and respond to medical emergency calls, along with the fire rescue team. And then public safety IT has requested a radio telecom manager to manage the city's entire radio and telecom system. Other position requests are included for fleet services and finance and solid waste. And then we also have other Priority One highlights, including our contingency line for capital-related items has increased, along with additional funding for economic development. So here's an example of our, our payroll increases, along with the medical increase. So our budget includes a 1.5% COLA across the board, 2.5% step increases, a 1.5% open range increases for those that are outside of the step plan or those that are exempt. So our example here uses an employee in the 103 classification, which is one of our lower paid classifications, and calculates what their pay would be after the increase from step one to step two, plus the COLA. So you can see at the top, that increase comes out to about $1,150 or $1,143 a year, or $95 a month before taxes. Then the insurance tables are broken down below between the PPO and HRA options. And so you, and they're also broken further down by the type of coverage an employee can select. So you can see that this is showing at the monthly increase. So the minimum monthly increase would be about $2.61 to an employee on the HRA plan, employee only, versus the maximum of $1,176 a month for a PPO family. Again, that's a monthly increase, not a per-pay period. So you can see on that far right column, the net employee pay increase does show that regardless, the employee's pay would go up with the raise and the health insurance increase. So our Priority Two and Three items are shown here and they're considered lower priority from Priority One, obviously, but still items that need to be addressed in the budget. Once again, public safety tops these priorities. Included here is half a million to move body cameras from the CIP plan to the police operating budget by using a software subscription service. As part of this program, we're, we're proposing transferring funds to the DA's office to assist them with additional resources needed to review the camera footage. And my understanding is any funds that are provided to the DA's office must also be partially matched to the public defender's office. So that's all included in that half a million. Police is also requesting a new investigative division that will include hiring four additional detectives and one sergeant to oversee the division. And this will alleviate the caseload on our existing detectives and provide increased police attention on criminal activity. Then other positions include additional staff for purchasing, city court, facilities maintenance and golf. And then we have fixed asset replacements and software services for parks and rec, public safety and streets. Are there any questions about any of the supplementals I've covered so far?
Erin, I'm sorry to interrupt. I have one, just out of curiosity. This, I'm trying to locate it on the line item, the landfill gas line item, I assume that's the old?
It is. That's the old landfill, yep. So we, our engineering firm identified some issues there that we have to address.
Thank you.
I got a question too, Erin.
Okay.
When was the last time that we increased the employee participation in the health insurance? It seems like it's been maybe...
At least two years and I, I want to either...
You're talking about the 80/20, or you're talking about the premium?
The premium.
The premium, yeah.
Yeah. Has it been three years ago? I mean, it seems like we've had two budgets with none.
Yes. I feel like that's right. I know we didn't last year.
Cam says three.
Three, okay.
Yeah, three years. Okay. So I mean, that's one of those things too, it just kind of crossed my mind. It's, it's, you know, three bucks to 11 bucks, something like that. It's one of those deals we got to be careful about that one day we're not asking for 50, you know, if we don't do a little bit incremental, you know?
Right.
All right.
And we have spent down a good bit of the fund balance in that insurance fund.
Yeah.
So this chart shows how headcount has been impacted over the last five years. From fiscal year '18 to the '22 proposed, we're showing an increase of 14% of, or 131 positions, of which 94 of these positions are for public safety. And also, our budget includes this year, allowance for vacancies of 3.5% for police salaries and benefits and 2% for part-time recreation wages. This is probably a pretty conservative allowance based on our history, but that is subject to change based on turnover and our ability to fill positions. Right now, we're currently running about 8% on vacancies across the city, most of which, 64% or so is in police and about 9% or 10% in fire, followed by a solid waste in street at 4% and 3%.
How many do we have open in police right now?
My understanding is about 50 positions. And that includes dispatch.
37, okay. How many do we, how many do we have? 37, he said.
Does that include dispatch?
Right. So I think with dispatch and everything, it's around 50.
How about in fire? How many do we have open?
I'm showing seven positions right now from the information I received today.
Okay. Does that include how many you've put in to move other places? Does that include how many you've put in to move other places? Okay.
Okay, so with our FY '21 budget amendment, we increased our budget for several major projects. And most of the items listed here were funded with one-time money as priority zero projects in that budget amendment. These items are all still planned, but are not anticipated to be completed this fiscal year. So rather than show a large increase to unassigned fund balance this year and then a big hit next year, our plan is to set aside those unspent funds and reserve them for next year. So by doing this, we'll show really our one-time expenses and revenues matching better. So this information shows also additional items that'll be presented to you before first reading that were not included in the budget for recreation reserve for the Patterson-Chiller budget amendment y'all approved a couple of months ago. And then also for the Rogers Park Pavilion roofs and the golf paving, golf parking lot paving. Are there any questions about these items? I know it's all just exciting stuff for you. Here's a look at our unassigned fund balance. With our increased sales tax revenues coupled with our hiring and spending freezes for nearly six months, we anticipate adding the fund balance by about 5 to 7 million right now this year. So we ended fiscal year 20 at 66 million and so project close to 70 to 72 million at the end of fiscal year 21. And right now, next year's budget does not project the use of an assigned fund balance. And you know, having that, that healthy fund balance does give us the ability to fund one-time projects, rather than, you know, going out for debt on certain things as well.
Erin, to clarify, that does not include the 5.6 that we're just rolling over and putting in those other buckets for the unassigned fund balance, so that it doesn't go way up and go way down.
Right. So you'll see like on our budget ordinance, it does show a use of fund balance because all encompassing, we are using that reserved fund balance that we're going to set aside this year, but it won't be in unassigned. So in summary, that's, next year's budget is cautiously optimistic. We're projecting revenues with, you know, mild to flat growth while also, also continuing to manage and monitor expenses. We'll continue watchful spending and keep council updated with monthly dashboard reports and our quarterly and mid-year reviews, and continue to present budget amendments as needed. And then at the six o'clock meeting, we have the public hearing and first reading of the city's budget ordinance and the tax rate ordinance.
I want to make sure everyone also knows that part of the reason for doing that on first reading this soon is to allow more from an HR standpoint in our, our finance department to be able to start programming some of the employee things that have to go in the budget that take them two to three weeks to be able to do that. So anything can be changed between now and second reading. So that's, I asked the question, hey, why are we doing this so quick? And that was the reason why we're the, with the understanding that anything can be changed.
Normally, we do this the first Thursday in June, but since that falls on Memorial Day week, that's also why we pushed it up a little bit too. Otherwise, we're getting pushed in almost to the middle of June.
I have a couple of questions, mainly on pay, on the pay plan, but I don't know if you have some. Erin's been, thank you, Erin's been very helpful over the last two or three days since we started getting everything, but I wanted to make just a couple of points that, you know, we added conservatively between 5 to 7 million to fund balance is what we're estimating, but a significant portion of the reason why we're adding 5 to 7 million to fund balance is because staff did a great job managing expenses during COVID, but also we didn't know what was going to happen during COVID. So we had a hiring freeze, we had a spending freeze, and you know, so that five to seven, and we had a pay freeze. So we didn't, not knowing what was going on with our budget, we didn't give raises until it was really mid-year when we, we gave our, you know, our, our increase. So that's really good to have that 5 to 7 million dollar difference, but part of that, don't want to mislead, it wasn't that we didn't budget correctly, it was just no one knew what 2020 held. The thing I've been talking with staff about was in a meeting on Monday and Tuesday that was going over, Rick probably knows more about this than anyone, but inflationary numbers, the tight labor market and what we're seeing in the private sector to be able to remain competitive and also in the, in the workforce where people are hopping from job to job. So I think some of the turnover that we're seeing is not necessarily a reflection of the city, it's just what everyone's seeing in, in that, in the market. But one thing I think is going to be different with us than what we typically have done is we're neck and neck competing with the private sector now on what costs are going to be. So I've got a couple of recommendations just for discussion. We've got 37 police positions that are, are available, not counting dispatch and some of the internal crime analyst positions and those things. We've all been getting the emails on fire on people that are either doing different things and taking different jobs or moving to Nashville, which that's another discussion on competing with Nashville, which is going to be hard to do. But I would like to start the recommendation on, we're at 4% right now.
Four for our step employees and three for our open range.
Yeah, I, I don't think that's enough, in my opinion. The numbers I had Erin run for public safety is a 3.5% COLA increase, which that 3.5% increase raises our starting salary for those that are going to apply to almost 41,000 and some change for the fire trainee, correct?
Firefighter one. So part of HR's recommendation was to start paying our fire trainees at a firefighter one level.
So what I've got is a public safety increase to 3.5% COLA, 2.5% step raise for 6%. And then across the board, for those that are not public safety, a 2.5% COLA and a 2.5% step raise, which is 5%. And I don't want to use these terms, but the American, I call it Biden bucks, but the, whatever, what's American.
American Reinvestment Plan Act.
Yeah, we got 21.7 million. And Melissa and Erin met today and there's a specific portion in that part that allows anyone that was related to COVID, Public Works, Police and Fire, sanitation, transit. You specifically can use that grant money for those funds. So one of the things I wanted to see what the cost was, if we do a $2,500 stipend for public safety, water sewer, COVID, or anyone that was the COVID-related, and then a $1,500 stipend for all city workers, one time. So it'd be a one-time bonus for, it's a stipend, but one time. So that gets public safety for this year closer to about eight, an 8% increase. And then that also gets for everyone else that is not considered public safety. That's almost a seven and a half, 7% increase. And Madeline, it's more, we've had this discussion before, that's your rank and file employee that may be 35 to 45,000 dollars, it's a lot, much larger increase on that stipend. So that's just the, what I had, had thrown out. And that really, I, I think as a council, we're either going to pay for it now, or we're going to be sitting here next year after we have more turnover with people going from job to job or place to place, and we're going to end up having to do a larger increase next year. So I'd rather see us do it incrementally as opposed to, to do that. So Erin, what would be the total on that, that would take our budget to?
It would be an increase of around 1.8 million for the, around 1.2 for the 3.5%, 2.5% on public safety and 2.5, 2.5 on the, on everyone else. That's about a 1.2, 1.3 million, is that correct, Jennifer?
1.2.
Yeah, and then on the stipends, be just a little, right around 600,000 funded from general fund with the rest being funded from the Biden bucks.
You can call it Biden bucks, it's okay.
So, so are we still going to do the percentage? But we just going to switch over to your, what well recommend?
Yeah, I mean, it would be, so you're really looking at 6% for public safety. I think the, what's important to do the COLA increase is that's going to raise the tide on all the salaries. So, you know, inflation right now is 4.3%. That, that raises that, those bottom, those, those hiring salaries as opposed to doing it all as a step increase, because that doesn't really help you on being able to hire people.
What will upper management be getting, what percentage?
I mean, that, they're not part of the step program, so it would be what everyone else would get, the.
The two and a half.
The two and a half, plus a two and a half.
Several things, I know this is not going to be really popular, but I know we've had a terrible year, everybody has. Not only have we had a terrible year financially, but I have lost two very close people to me to COVID. So it's, it's a bad year we all had. In fact, it was a year just everyone was numb. And I know this is what we've always done and we may always do this, but this year, to me, with COVID the way it is, I hate, well, not hate, my momma killed me, she didn't like me to say hate. I would, would not like to see or change, like let's say someone in upper management will, I'm just throwing out these fictitious numbers, will walk away with $4,300 roughly, let's say. And then that same 2.5%, the lower people, somebody may walk out with $200 or maybe $500 at the max. That, that bothers me a little bit. And I said, well, what about if we give upper management just 1%? But I'm going to get on something else. What bothers me about the firefighters? Is this a fix, a Band-Aid fix? And I like the clothes, but is it going to be a Band-Aid for them? In other words, two years from now, they're in the same shape? The reason why I'm asking that is. When firefighters, and these are facts coming from some firefighters, work approximately 100 hours a week just to make ends meet. And the firefighter spends 48 to 72 hours at the fire hall and then three 12-hour shifts on a second job, when they can walk to Nashville or some of these other places and make $10,000 more. And then, for instance, a firefighter advanced EMT makes 43,000. And that to me is embarrassing, when we are supposedly and nationally known as being one of the fastest growing cities. And so personally, I'm embarrassed to the fact that they can go, like I said, 30 miles away and make $10,000 more. We have people, I don't know if you all are aware, that are just dropping out of the fire department like flies. And what we are doing, council and mayor, we are fattening frogs for snakes. We are training these people and they are just, after they get their certificates or whatever they get, they buy a see you later, thank you. And this is about a third of the workforce at the fire department. And two-thirds of our fire department with people leaving like they're leaving, two-thirds of the people have five years or less experience. So, I mean, it, it's bothering me. And, I don't know, it's just bothering me. I just think we, we had to do some emergency things. If not, you're going to see some of those guys out there walking away. And when they walk away, we talking about years of experience. It could be the next month, we may have 100 years of experience walking out the door, only because of how we paying them. So I'm just trying to wrap my mind around that and then wrap my mind around what you're saying, Mayor, is that, I guess my question is, is this a quick fix? Or will they reap the benefits of this, really? And I don't know, because I don't understand.
I mean, I think this is going to be something after, even after we're gone, over the next several years, I, I don't want to use the R word, but a lot of us who are in the private sector know what happens when you hit the R word, that, you know. But I think specifically in solid waste, fire, police, we're going to have to be able to not just look at this on a yearly basis. I think it's going to have to be something that we're, we're going to have to monitor as it goes on. I, I see with 37 police officers available right now and the trend that's nationally, I mean, I could see a police officer starting salary at $55,000 to be able to, to compete. But, you know, and I think I could see the same close to being for fire, so.
And we, we do have class and comp budgeted for this fiscal year 22. HR has that in their budget to look at all positions within the city and compare that to the market as well. So I would anticipate seeing some changes come from that. That would be implemented most likely as part of the FY '23 budget.
Are we going to use outside firm for that?
Yes, I understand.
But that other one was a joke.
As long as it's never called MAG ever. Never want to say that word. I'm not even going to say it again.
Yeah, these outside firms have assassinated our employees.
One thing, you know, we're going to have to be aware of, I mean, you know, look, this is a, this is kind of a conversational topic, right? And it's kind of hard in the lights and with 100 people in the audience and all that kind of business, but you know, it's not limited, I don't think, to those three departments. I mean, you know, we couldn't, we couldn't hire a planner. We've been having trouble hiring engineers. We got IT that we probably don't compete real, real super well with in the, in the, in the private market. I mean, we got our TV staff, I mean, you know, it goes dang down the line here that's, that's a, you know, a lot of this is maybe a little bit of a remnant of getting rid of the pension 10 or 11 years ago, or it's a, you know, it's hard to make comparisons. And one of the things we got to make sure when we do this class of comp deal is, I mean, we never, ever, ever have been able to get, and I don't know if it's impossible, but you know, a real, you know, true net benefit plus pay number. And I know we could all argue about whether or not it matters how much you get paid versus it matters whether or not you have a match on your 401K or, you know, whatever. But you know, the, the $10,000 number, I don't, you know, I don't know if that's the exact number or not, but you know, okay, well, do they match on a 401K? Do they have a pension? Do they pay their health insurance? I mean, all those things matter to your net pay at the end. If we're going to do class and comp next year, we have got to figure out a way to get the right total number to look at this thing. But I mean, Shane is exactly right. This is, you know, we, we had the same exact conversation in September, October, whenever that was, when we, I mean, you know, and if frankly, if you guys will remember, we, we not only accelerated when we talked about the budget after COVID, up into September or October, whenever that timeframe was, when we thought it was going to be a little bit later, you know, accelerated that and we maybe doubled or close to doubled the amount, it seems like, of what we felt like we were going to give in raises in July, because we recognized this is already happening. So, you know, the, the, the market dictates this and we, you know, I don't know how to go about the idea. We've talked a lot, Craig, I know he's put a lot of work into it and you guys probably have too, the idea of the pension and what is, what are the options look like as far as bringing something like that back? You know, I'm, I'm open to figuring that out. If there's a way to figure it out, I know it's really complex. I know we've, I've tried a couple of times, but in essence, I mean, I'm, I'm supportive of what you're saying, of the, what I'm worried about is that we're gonna, we, you know, we may be too, we may be too focused on three departments and not getting the other ones done either is my, is my worry. I mean, I, I, I'm just saying that, you know, sorry to some of the people in the crowd, but I'm, some of the other people in the crowd may high-five me later, but I mean, it's, this is, this is a concern. We don't have an unlimited pot to pull from here. And, and we got to make sure we've got all these bases covered. I mean, you know, my personal belief is I think we need a couple more planners. I mean, you know, dude, since I, seven years ago started here, you can't find a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Monday, whatever night you choose at 7:00, somebody's up there in those offices, you know, working way past when they're kind of supposed to be working. And, you know, so I, I don't know. I agree with you, we definitely gotta get market, we gotta, we gotta get closer. I'm glad we're doing the study. I'm a little tentative on not spreading that out a little bit more. It's probably my only, my only thing that's bubbling around in me right now, is all, is all I'm kinda worried about.
You know, I, I think it'd be good. We, we've, we've had, now that we've moved to more of this continuation budget almost, I hate to use those terms, but where we, we're not so locked in. I'm not sure it's not a discussion that we, we look at the increase now, and then after six months, we look back at where our sales tax numbers at, where, you know, some of the other things that we don't know about. And then we say, okay, we need to readjust based on where the market is right now. I mean, if we can't hire CDL drivers, or we can't hire solid waste people, I think we lost two solid waste people that went over to Raymond, I'm looking, or Darren, I mean, we lost two drivers going to the private sector, three drivers. You know, that may be another, not just do it in June for our budget, but we really need to look at it on a, if we can't hire drivers and we need to be nimble on our pay, then having the ability to be able to come back and say, okay, look, here's where we need to go, with the understanding that those same drivers that leave to go to the private sector, if there's a dip in the economy, then there's gonna be some consequences that you typically don't see with the city. So.
Yeah, I agree with Rick, it's a, this is something that, it's something else, and just like our TV people, you know, they got national recognition. They're the best in the country, national recognition. So, we, we're just way behind on paying our employees. But still, what bothers me is when a employee is hired, and then they have to turn around and get another full-time job. I mean, that's wear and tear on their bodies mentally, physically. I don't know, it just bothers me.
Sean, I think.
Uh, so, we all talk about quality of life and things like that, and what more important of a job visit to a municipal government than to be able to call a 911 operator and dispatch a police officer, dispatch a fireman? And the, at the rate we're losing these positions, we, we gotta look at, we, we talked, like Rick said, we talked in September or October about how we really needed to make a really strong plan on retention and recruitment. But we gotta, I'm glad we're doing this study, because then we can figure out where these numbers really are, so we can be on the market, and like the mayor said, revisit this in maybe six months, start something in June, revisit in six months, that way we can know the market and can move forward. That way, we're not, we're, we're looking at numbers loss, but we're not looking at the amount of money we're spending to train these people, just to get them ready to go, and then they're out the door losing, then we start all the way back at zero. Then you got people in police cars, or people taking dispatch calls, or people in a fire truck that are riding around not trained, because they're just now starting over again. So, we can't just look at the people losing, we gotta look at the experience we're losing as well.
I think, I think the comp study is a really important piece of that. And in addition to that, not just different job classifications, job types, positions, but, you know, is there a pension where we're comparing, talk about the total benefit? You know, what is the total benefit to our employees based on medical, health, dental, all the different things we offer? We really have to have a good feel of that at every position to really know where we are. Are we way under in some places and a little under at others? And that prompts the conversation that even if we are not as behind as we think we are, where do we want to invest our dollars to make sure we don't have that turnover where it's most critical in the organization? So, I mean, I, I agree.
Can you repeat your plan or your suggestion one more time?
Yeah, I don't wanna say it's not, not, not the mayor's plan, it was just something, yeah. Yeah, so I, I, I just try to sit down with Aaron mainly to say, what can we afford? And what do y'all feel comfortable with? I'm fine doing more if we feel like, you know, we, we, we put, we put $5 to $7 million in the, in the general fund, mainly because we didn't, we didn't spend it. We just have to be careful that whatever we do, we need to understand that's moving forward every single year. So, you know, there were not, there were a few of us were up here in '08, when it was a much different discussion than we are having right now. And before I say that, Madeline, I think one thing, and I'm not, we're not talking about an increase, but we have a reappraisal next year, and we're all gonna have to have the discussion on tax rate next year. Where for 21 years, we lowered our tax rate, and then we had to have a discussion on raising our tax rate outside of a reappraisal. So, you know, whatever discussion that we have, we're all gonna have to realize that next year, when the reappraisal comes along, whatever that number is, we're, we're gonna have to talk about where we are on, on readjustment as we go through equalization. So, what I have, Madeline, was the reason I felt like the COLA was the important part, because that helps address the starting salaries. So, I had, for public safety, a 3.5% COLA and a 2.5% STEP raise, so that's 6%. And non-public safety, it's 2.5% COLA and 2.5% STEP, which is 5%. A $2,500 stipend for those that were COVID-related, and then $1,500 for those that weren't COVID-related. So, the 20, putting it in rough numbers, if, if someone's making $42,000, you're looking at a $5,000 increase in fiscal year '21, '22, which is about an 11 or 13% increase.
How much of that was permanent?
Permanent was 6%, was 6%.
So, have, about half of that number, so, a little bit more than half.
And $7 million still going to the general fund with the study going on?
Well, you wouldn't have 7 million going to the general fund, because you're gonna be subtracting about 1.9, yeah, just a rough 2 million that will go, will, that will go away.
Because the reason why it's low, that sounds kind of low overall, but we already have 4% and 3% budgeted, so that 1.9 is in addition to what's already in the budget.
But the one-time money is outside of that as well, it wouldn't.
Right, the stipends would just be one-time, yes. And, and I think that's something Council could totally feel comfortable about using fund balance on a one-time stipend. You know, you just have to be thoughtful about when you're using it for operating continuing expenses.
I think it's really important that that message be communicated very clearly too, because that gets confusing and won't feel very good 12 months from now.
Right. How would it, how much was the cost of living COLA?
3.5% public safety, 2.5% non-public safety.
Can we take that up to 4%? What does it look like?
Jennifer's got the tool pulled up, so I'm gonna let her run that real fast.
4% on the public safety would be, it would be a 1.3 million, so an additional 130,000, 150,000 above the 2.5% just increasing the public safety.
What would that number be for everyone else?
If you added another half percent?
Yeah, to everyone else.
Right, so that would be.
Two and a half to 30.
Yeah, five and a half, or, yeah, I'm sorry, two and a half to 30.
No, no pressure at all.
I know, right, we're all watching.
While we're, while we're looking for that number, let me, let me. Let me add another component to our discussion. While we're looking for that number, it'll give us something instead of just staring. You know, this is an opportunity, we're, we're not, there's not a silver bullet that's gonna answer all this, and we're not gonna have something that answers this question. But I think a lot of information, one of the things we need to do is to get the right information. The comp study is going to be a very appropriate process to go through. But while we're doing this, you know, there's things like, I mean, people are leaving, the, the resources there to ask them, are, are we going through and documenting an exit interview? And why they believe that they are leaving, what, each of the departments? Are we getting why people are leaving, and is it just a dollar figure?
So Pam may wanna stand up and answer that.
So, yes, we do.
Pam, will you come to the podium? You know, that may be a good, all the department directors, if, if, or if you don't mind, if you're asked a question, come to the podium, because the camera can't zoom, zoom back.
Sure, so, we do an exit interview on all of our employees that leave, or at least we try to. We get about probably 98% of them. And so, there are several reasons people leave, you know, other employment. I would say 75% of the other employment is, is money-related. But then, the second largest reason people leave is to retire. And then, the third is for personal reasons. And I think COVID has played a lot into that. A lot of people are moving back home, people are trying new careers, they're just doing different things. That's followed by self-employment. And then, of course, we have the involuntaries where, you know, we let people go. But then there are some that are moving out of state, it's just not the right fit. Some are returning to school, some are because of illness. And so, it's a, it's a combination of all of those things. But I would say the, the biggest part of people leaving is that other employment. Now, the reason they started looking for employment, we don't know always what that is, but we do know that a lot of them, when they do look for other employment, they do see an increase in pay.
And, and I'm not a human resources person, so I, I don't know. We ask, the exit interview, why did you leave? What would cause you to stay? Is that question been answered? Do we get that information back?
So, some of the, some people will give us that, that information. And again, some is, it's pay-only. Some say, hey, look, I, I really wanna stay, but, you know, the amount of money that I can make leaving, you know, has caused me to leave. Some say, I just wanna try something different. Some say, I wanna work at, I'm in the same field, but there's a lot more opportunity. If I go to Rutherford County, there's different jobs that I can do that I can't do probably here. And so, we get that information, we send it to the directors, so we are capturing that.
I, I think that would be helpful, as we get more strategic thinking, what's happening in government service, and why people are leaving, and why we can't fill positions. We need to have that kind of information as we go forward to strategically look at this, because if this is a five or 10-year or even longer issue that we need to address, you know, a culture or whatever needs to change, we, we need to be able to do that from up here, you know, from, from the administrative standpoint.
Bill, Bill, real quick, I make, Pam made the recommendation along with Adam the other day about Craig and Pam presenting to the council on a quarterly basis.
That's correct.
Where we are based on turnover and, you know, where we see holes that if, to really just let the council know, hey, here are issues where we're having filling positions, or here's where we, you know, turnover in the departments a little higher. So, that way, it just keeps us up on a quarterly basis.
That's perfect, that's what, that was what I was looking for. But I would support the idea of making some adjustment in the short term that I think, you know, encourages people, that, you know, we're responsive to their needs and their concerns, and we wanna retain people, you know, I, I would be supportive of that.
I think the mayor's plan really addresses some of the issues, if you like that, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
But I also think too, if we move forward with the mayor's plan, after.
Were you talking about the mayor's plan?
Yeah, it's gonna be his plan, all right.
After the study, once the study comes back, we adjust accordingly.
I agree.
And that way, you know, we're really trying to do the right thing, and we're gonna try to do the right thing as we continue to look at the pay study.
And I think it's important for the resident who's out there, especially the small business owners, or, you know, trying to get people, someone told me in this economic deal we were in the other day that they were getting almost 300 to 400 applicants for the restaurant services in Nashville, but they could only get two to four people who would come and actually show up for an interview just because they had to show that they were applying for a job to keep unemployment coming in. And so, you know, I think we don't get a lot of those decisions at the local level that we now are, are having to deal with. But I, I think we're gonna be having this discussion much more frequently than we have in the past. And, you know, I'm, I'm not saying that we can't ever get to where we compete with Metro. I think financially, we probably, all due respect to Metro, don't wanna be compared to where they are financially in the situation that they're dealing with as opposed to where we are. But I do think what Rick is saying on planners, on, I know we've had some issues hiring in water and sewer.
Engineering.
Engineering, there, there are gonna be holes that we need, we need to fill. And as we, the reason I think the COLA is the right thing to do is we don't start talking about compression when we start looking at, on the, the STEP. So, what, what are those numbers, Ms. Brown?
To increase by half a percent, it's gonna be about 1.6 million in addition to what was in the proposed budget. That would be roughly 360,000 more on top of the initial that you proposed.
You can say the mayor's plan, everybody else is. So, another 360 if we went half and half, a half a percent on each one.
So, can I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, because of my concerns that I laid out earlier.
Who you pointing at?
Oh, you, because you brought up the extra half a percent.
It's usually me who's pointing at it.
I'm just kinda, here's the deal, we, we may need to save a little more dry powder as it relates to how we budget right now, because, I mean, we've gotta, I think if we do the idea of what Shane brought to us, the mayor's plan, and the class and comp, I, I got a sneaky suspicion, we're gonna need some dry powder when the class and comp deal comes back, when the pay plan comes back. And so, instead of, and, you know, that would allow us a little more capability to spread that out a little bit. I mean, you know, look, at the end of the day, that 360,000 bucks, we're limiting that to a fairly narrow number of the, of the employees. And so, we, you know, I mean, everybody's getting a good one, I think, you know, a good raise, but the, the, the bulk of it would be a little bit more limited. That would leave us that 360 there to spread out if we needed to. And look, if, at the end of the day, I see some people shaking their heads and all that stuff, but at the end of the day, if it comes back saying $10,000 is what we gotta pay to get to be, some of those groups to be even, so be it. Then we gotta address it, you know, but we don't want to know that exact number till we get there, and we leave ourselves a little more dry powder, you know, 3.5 plus, I mean, the total number, 6% raise after, I think we did a 4 or 5% number in October. Look, if we look back, when I, I started seven years ago, two weeks ago, you look at the starting pay for a firefighter, and the starting pay for a police officer at those times, I think the number, the, the difference is somewhere just north of 40% in the last seven years, as far as the starting pay, what it was when I started versus what it is now over a seven-year period. You know, it's something in the neighborhood of, you know, 32 to 42, or, you know, somewhere in that kind of a range. You know, it takes a while to get there, but we're, I think what we're trying to show here is we're trying to get there, and we're working, trying to make it happen and do it in a responsible way. So, anyway, I, I'll probably stick with what Shane said, and, and leave us a little more dry powder for the class and comp study, and then, and then whatever it says happens, we'll knock it out when we know more.
What's realistic for the, for the study, what's realistic to.
Pam, how long?
I don't mean spending 360 if that's what you're.
What, what would be the term?
What's the time, what's the timing on the class and comp? Pam, come to the podium, please, sorry.
So, I think it takes about 90 days for the class and comp to, to begin and end. But then, of course, we have to do an RFCSP.
If we have that plan to re-explore this, or on a continuing basis, get these, this feedback, then I think we could address it.
Of course, it'll be after July, so you gotta remember. Because it won't be budgeted till after July before we start the process. So, it'll be a little while, but that stipend should carry over for a while too, right?
Do you feel like that that could be done by mid-year, when we, when we have our mid-year review on the budget?
Yeah, it should be.
Okay.
End of the calendar year, basically, right?
Yes.
The one thing we do have to consider, we're, we're at 1, 1.3% growth in sales tax, is that what you're figuring?
Well, I was until we got the numbers today. So, really now, I'm not showing any growth, because this month came in way higher than we anticipated. So, we're showing 54.4 on local sales tax, and right now, I'm projecting about 55.4 this year. four on local sales tax. And right now, I'm projecting about fifty-five four this year.
And the important thing to remember here is, as it relates to those projections, I appreciate you not showing growth relative to right now because-
It's up demand.
Yeah. And a year and government money.
Yeah.
I mean, we're sitting here a year from now comparing to today. Hopefully, those checks really aren't happening like they're happening now because the economy doesn't need it, which means, yeah, the bottom bucks-
And that's the one thing, the information we got on Tuesday, that the stimulus money typically will do, for every dollar that's put in the economy, it will generate three. And this stimulus money is not doing that. It's one-to-one. So, it's not generating more economic benefit long-term besides debt.
And the RFCSP, you know, once the budget is approved in June, you know, I would think that HR could go ahead and start the process because it's not like they would be paying the professional firm in June. They, we wouldn't receive a bill until FY twenty-two had begun anyway. So-
I think it's important on this class and comp is we're, we have this in the budget. And I can go back all the way to remembering, I think it was Burris and Associates that we had. And I don't remember who the one was before that. But, you know, our market is not McKinney, Texas. You know, our market is Franklin, Nashville, Lebanon, Galton, Hendersonville, Smyrna, Rutherford County, Mount Juliet. That's our market. You know, if someone wants to leave to go to McKinney, Texas, then we're not gonna be able to stop them to go. But we need to make sure that, you know, if we're losing to other communities, which, I mean, under this current plan, this is gonna take us to, Metro Nashville right now is fifty thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars. This is gonna take our starting, not with, not including the stipend, but with a three and a half percent COLA, not including a two and a half percent raise. This is gonna take us to where the only people who are ahead of us are Nashville, Franklin, and Hendersonville. So, those are the two, or the three that would be ahead. And I'm not sure you can compare us to Nashville. Franklin, little different. That's a little different. But, I mean, I don't, I publicly would say I don't think there's any way Hendersonville should be paying more than what a, what a starting sal, what the starting salary for, what we would bring someone in. And then on top of that, the other discussion is gonna have to be, as we move, as we've moved more into first response, I think the number that was stated today, eighty percent of our calls on fire and rescue are all medical-related. So, you know, the other part needs to be talked about on what that incentive is for someone to go get the param, you know, get their paramedic or EMT. And with that, I don't think it's unrealistic, I'm looking at chief, that if we're gonna invest in a new employee, a significant amount of training, other municipalities will require a contract to be signed. And if they leave to go to another municipality, that they pay that training money back. And so, I don't think, as Madeline said, I wrote it down, fattening frogs for snakes, that, you know, we need to make sure that we don't provide that. I mean, I think it's pay, but also it's an environment to letting people know you just can't come in here because you can't get hired in another municipality not having any experience and that we're gonna train you. And then, regardless of what the pay is, you're leaving, going somewhere else. I don't think that's right for the residents of Murfreesboro either. And I think we've had people who've done that, who came in because they couldn't get hired in Metro, they didn't have the experience, and they just used us for the experience. So, I think it's a coupling of pay, training, and environment. And I'm all for working on all those.
One of the things I'd ask both, especially both chiefs in here, is to also maybe provide us with some information as it relates to retention on, you know, when somebody, when somebody leaves one of our departments to go to Nashville, we'll call it, just for the easy example here, you know, are they in the same situation where I think kinda we are, where we're, you know, if you come to work for one of our public safety departments, you, it doesn't matter if you got ten or fifteen years of experience, you come in at the, at the ground level, kinda, you know, so to speak, not a trainee. But I think you kinda come in at a very low number. Or, I wanna know if our, those people, those municipalities that he just listed are also doing the same thing. Because, you know, if they're all given credit for five years' worth of experience, and they're coming in at a higher number, we need to be doing the same thing. We can't, that's just, that's just fattening them, fattening the frogs that much more. I mean, we're just not, we're not willing to be the snake if, and take other people's employees if we're, if we don't, if we're not willing to do that. So, we don't need to be naive about this and say, well, oh, no, everybody who comes in's gotta come in at the bottom. But everybody else around us is sucking us up on our, on our two, three, four, five-year employees. So, I'd like to see some information, get some more clarity on that from you guys about where we stand relative to those other markets, okay?
And I understand what you're saying there, and that made me think about something. We are already so, so low on our pay. And let's say we have a firefighter that comes in and has five years of experience. That firefighter will be paid that five-year experience money based on that. But we want to be careful that these new people coming in with all this experience don't come in making more than firefighters that are already there.
And we want to make sure they don't come in with the wrong experience too. But, I mean, that's what the hiring process is for. So, I mean, we don't necessarily want somebody who's gotten trained the wrong way. But, you know, at the end of the day, I'm not, you know, too, you know, I mean, there are other cities that can train firefighters, you know. I mean, there's other experience that good firefighters, good police officers can come from, certainly. We're just gonna have to make sure we have a substantial interview process to get through that, you know, if that's, if that's the direction we need to go to offset some of this.
Yeah, I don't want to, but I don't want, you know, we're different than a, than a private company because we're having our budget discussions in public.
Right.
So, you know, it's hard to have a strategy on hiring, what we're gonna do to take away from another city when we do that publicly. So, I, but, and I'm fine with that. But, but I don't want to give the impression, you know, I think from what I saw today, whether it's six percent, six and a half percent, five percent, five and a half percent, I think that entire council is saying, we're gonna have this discussion. I said it was a dirty word when I said the class and comp study. It's what I told Aaron, but we're gonna go through the class and comp study. But I think what we're saying is that if we're, if we're, we need to be nimble on market adjustments as that comes in the next six months. But this is not a bad place to work. I mean, and I don't want to give that impression that, you know, this is, with a thousand people that we've got, we have good healthcare, we have retirement, and it's a lot better than a lot of people have in the small business, in the small business side. So, I don't want to give the impression to the resident who's out there that this is a bad place to work. I think what we're trying to do and what we're seeing publicly is your elected officials are saying, how can we pay more to our employees? And there's not a lot of businesses right now going through what we've gone through the last year who are saying, how can I, how can I get to an eleven percent raise this year? Now, is it enough and wish we could do more? Hundred percent? And hopefully, that's what we can talk at the end of the year. So-
I mean, I'll tell you just from experience, this is important. You know, I mean, an eight percent match on a 401K is two or three times more than any other company that I deal with, any employees anywhere. A, you know, what, our employees pay for their percentage of their healthcare is a third of the participation that, what I see in other employees that I, you know, people that I deal with in their retirement and their planning and all that kinda stuff. So, I mean, you know, the benefits package is still, I agree.
Yeah. And I, you know, I don't want the other employees who are sitting out there to think that we think more of public safety than we do anyone else. But, I mean, just the facts on looking at where we are with public safety, not only with fire, but with police, is, those are gonna be, those are tough jobs. And, you know, someone came to me the other day and they were, said something about the police department. And I'm like, hey, we got thirty-seven open positions. You're welcome to apply. And nationally, I think we're gonna see that moving forward. That's gonna be a really, really tough position to fill. So, I think we are gonna have to have exceptions in certain areas, whether it be police, fire, engineers, if we can't hire, because we're competing against the public, the private sector. And those are gonna be, it's different than what it was ten years ago or even fifteen years ago because we're gonna have to be more nimble to be able to pay people.
I don't think any employee, and that's not being critical, this is not, this comment is not being critical. But I don't think any employee would not agree this is an excellent place to work. What they are saying is they want to be treated fair. You know, we just treat our employees fairly. And we, and, you know, and we're gonna get there because of this comp. And as far as the comp is concerned this time, I know a big problem with our comp study last time. We are comparing what a secretary is doing in that same level. But we need to make sure, Pam, that we write down everything they are doing. Just because the number five here is a number five in Franklin, but the number five here may be doing more responsibilities than that. And one more thing, you mentioned that exit interviews we'll get, we recommend that we get a quarterly, I'm looking at you, but I'm not talking to you. We get a quarterly, that Craig's gonna provide us with a quarterly report on the people that are exiting. I wanna see, and I don't know, I'm not speaking for any other council member, but sometimes I'm gonna wanna see the actual paperwork. I wanna read what they're saying.
I think we can get, Pam can provide us comments, but I don't think, can we, it's not our role to get the individual people's paperwork, is it?
I think, I think aggregate data is good. I think one of the effects of that is gonna be to limit what people say, if it's gonna be discussed publicly. I think that's, it's not a good idea to have that there if we want to get good-
I bear the difference now. If we have an employee that leaves, and, and I'm not calling anybody a liar, I'm not doing that. But we have an employee that leaves, and we know, some people know why they leave. And then, you know, when the report comes back, everything is hunky-dory. You know, they left because they're getting another job or some, some, some. And what about if they are leaving because of the, the way they've been treated? I wanna know that. I wanna know that.
Well, that information-
Let me ask you this question. Is it against the law if I wanna read an exit interview? Can I read comments? Or can I, do I just have to accept what's told to me?
Most of an employee's personnel file is a public record subject to certain individually identifying information like address, phone number, email, bank account numbers. I know. So, if it's, if it's in the employee personnel file, then it's, it's available as a, to a member of council or a member of the public.
Okay, that's what I wanna know. And sometimes I may wanna read those.
And Mayor, and in council, I will say, when we do the exits, there's a series of questions we have. So, we can recap that for you because they do answer with a number score. And then, you know, comments, again, we can, you know, put those together as well.
And that'll be also what they say, you saying recap. But I wanna see exactly what they are saying while they're leaving.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think the answer is anybody can read, anybody from the public could read those. I think as we talk about it up here, the more and more we talk about specific things that specific employees say in their exit interviews, it may have a different impact than what we might expect on the front end. So, I think if anybody wants to go read them, let's go read them. But for me, I'm gonna stay out of the HR world and try to run a dang organization up here.
I will also say though, that the director of each department, they do get the actual exit and everything that the employee said. So, they-
Perfect.
And as a council, we, we keep saying, I'm gonna stay out of this. That's not our business. That's not our business. As a council, we are in charge of all the employees, all the employees. So, I'm tired of hearing you overstepping your boundaries. That's something you shouldn't be looking into. That's something you shouldn't be questioning. I'm, I'm in charge.
Actually, no. That's not what the charter says. I'm not trying to disagree with you.
I mean, well, what are we, who's over, okay, are we not over all the employees in the city?
No, we're not.
Okay, so who does Craig tend to answer to?
We're over four employees, Madeline. We're over the city manager, the city attorney, the city judge, and the city recorder. Those are the four people that the council has direct decisions that we can hire and fire.
Well, we need to look at that chart again. Because, I mean, an employee ought to be able to come to a council member if they're having a problem. They ought to be able to come to us. Now, it may be squished at this level or whatever, but an employee should be able to come to us. And you saying it's out of our, it's not our business, we got to change that.
I do think if there were some opportunities for us to see some regular employee feedback, exit interviews, I think that would go a long way to provide some comfort associated with culture and why-
Absolutely.
-and different things. I mean, I think that's a good thing.
So, who answers to us one more time? Who answers to us?
The city manager, it's been the same since I've been here for twenty years. So, it's the city manager, the city attorney, the city judge, and the city recorder. Used to be city recorder treasurer, but it's no longer, it's just one position.
And so, we're also saying that the day-to-day operation, we should stay out of it.
That's what our charter says. We shouldn't be involved in day-to-day decision-making. That's what we have the city manager is for.
Okay. I don't know what the penalty is gonna be, felony or misdemeanor or whatever. But I'm gonna get arrested because I'm getting in the employee's business. I'm gonna get in it. I'm just telling y'all right now. So, if you hear about it, it's true. And I'm not showboating, but I'm just saying.
Maybe a little.
No, no, I'm just giving my opinion how things need to change.
I've gotta move the meeting along. I think if there's ever a position for the city manager to come open, I think that's the position you're talking about you may want to do. But we, that's what our charter says. And so, when we get involved in day-to-day employee operations, that's the opposite of our charter. But we've got to move to, we have thirty minutes left to get to water resources and Murfreesboro City Schools. And so, Darren has a six o'clock solid waste meeting at the police headquarters. So, we'll, we'll give it to you, Darren.
They want to, right? Because this is just the water stuff.
Oh, no. Nobody leaves.
I will go, I will try to get through this pretty quick if I can find, there we go. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm here to present the water resources. That's the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund and the Stormwater Enterprise Fund for FY twenty-two. We have a balanced budget of fifty-six point six million, thirty-one million sewer revenue, about seventeen point two million in water revenue. And then, we have some TAP revenue around seven point seven. That's growth, growth-related revenue. Our operating expenses are right around twenty-five and a half million. We do have capital expenditures around eleven, and our debt service is around nine million. And again, we have a, an expense where we take that growth revenue and we expense it as a reserve and sinking funds. And I'll break that down a little bit for you. This is a change from our FY twenty-one. You can see kind of our bottom line total operating expenditure increases two point eight percent. Our total expenditure increase is one point nine two percent. And you do have this slideshow in your, in your packet. So, the water sales, we're projecting about a four point two percent increase from last year's budget. That's based on that fifty cent minimum rate increase that you all have passed on first reading. And we're looking at about one point three percent on sewer sales, and that's due to growth. This is where we look at the reserve expenses. And the highlighted yellow components make up that growth-related revenue. Special assessments, sewer taps, and water taps, those are really what we call our capacity buy-in fees. We do have about two point four million sinking funds for larger capital projects. This is projects we like to look to pay for with cash versus going out and getting debt service. And we do kinda have a future capex amount of about one point seven million. The personnel, we're asking for three employees, two in operation and maintenance, and one at the water treatment plant. You can kinda see that growth personnel trend, one seventy-three. So, we've had about, what is that, thirteen employees over the last five years increase. This is what the effect of the budget. And right now, we do have the four percent and three percent raises plugged into our budget. So, this numbers will change based on if we have a different COLA, different open range increase. But we're looking at about a total operating expense increase of about six hundred and sixty-four thousand. That's about a two point six percent increase to our operating expense and one point two increase on the total budget. On the stormwater, we're looking at about a three point two six million dollar in revenues. That's simply from the stormwater fees. from the stormwater fees. You've got, we've got salaries and benefits. We do have some working reserve expense and some stormwater sewer repair or storm sewer repair and replacement and some rate-funded capital assets. We do put back about 1.2 million from the stormwater fund back into the general fund for services rendered. And then we've got some operating expenses and consulting services also in that FY22 budget. This is just a trend of our stormwater revenue. It's a pretty good correlation coefficient. We're looking right about, we've increased about 70,000, we, we increased about $70,000 per year for the last several years. I can equate that into amount of imperviousness that's in the budget memo. I don't have it offhand. I can get geeked out for you if you want me to.
Would that be Z squared?
Do what?
Would that be Z squared?
R squared?
No, what you're talking about.
Z squared, yeah, something like that.
I was just testing your Georgia tech.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know if there was, was there a Z squared in statistics?
I made it completely.
That's right, that's right.
Don't worry about it, Darren.
So the stormwater operating expenses, we're looking at about a 3.1% increase from FY21. We do have a fairly significant five-year CIP program. That green line is 12 months of operating expenses. The blue line is three months of operating expenses. And if we actually expend, you know, part of the stormwater fund is that we do not incur debt, we pay everything with cash. If we do actually expend those funds, we, we just barely stay above our, our three-month minimum by FY25. Historically, we have not been able to spend as much as we've projected, although we try. I don't, I'll go through our accomplishments really quick. We did our sewer allocation annual report this past year. We're looking at a finalized wet weather treatment study at our water resource recovery facility. We determined that our small-scale bio-solids dryer unit did not meet desired specs. We did complete the tank painting for several tanks. You've seen our new logo on the Mill Street tank. We did get our 2021 NPDS permit submitted. We are looking at a priority retrofit catchment map to help identify priority catchments for stormwater retrofits. Goals, we're trying to get the Northeast Regional Pump Station finished in design, initiate into a CMMS or computerized maintenance management software so we can get more into a digital age versus paperwork order systems, design and bid a section of Salem Sewer, the Salem-Barfield Interceptor, and design and bid a gravity sewer pump station, the Forest Main to get ready for the state, for the Veterans 840 interchange property, get the overall creek pump station upgraded, and get a system-wide GIS map that show our sewer capacity, kind of a heat map that we've talked about that shows where we have capacity limitations. So that was it. That's fast, I know, and I appreciate everybody's time and I'm available for questions if you got any.
Any questions for Darren? Have fun at the solid waste meeting.
I intend to, thank you very much.
Good luck.
I may be back. I've got a roof, I've got a roof replacement item at the end of the agenda tonight, so if I'm not back, Mr. Tindall will take, take.
You're looking forward to seeing that PowerPoint.
We'll take care of it. Go on.
All right. Trey, Mr., Mr. Duke, I think this is your first budget that you're presenting to us.
Yes, first budget.
This is where the new person normally drops down and goes 10 pushups.
Okay. I appreciate that. But to not intimidate anyone, I'll skip that for tonight. I do want to say, I'll give you a brief overview of our budget. I want to thank our school board, they passed this a few weeks ago after eight hours of work sessions with me, so thank you to our school board, thank you to Mr. Shacklet for sitting in on that as well. I have narrowed this down.
Not to interrupt, but I think you have some board members who are here, school board members who are here as well, or one school board member.
Thank you to Mr. Ballard for attending tonight and showing his support as well. They, like I said, they went through the marathon, eight hours with us, so I appreciate that and we've narrowed it down just to four for you guys, so we'll be good. So we have three goals for us on the budget as we started working with the budget. Next week ends the beginning of my first 90 days in this position along with Ms. Williams, our finance director. So we started on the budget very, very quickly as we began looking at where we were going for next year and coming out of the year we just came out of, which threw us some curveballs like it did everyone, both financially and programmatically. So as we looked at three budget goals for us as a district as we were writing it, first and foremost, of course, utilize our resources. We want to maximize those educational outcomes for kids. We want to make sure we have competitive salaries and benefits and retain our employees. And of course, a big one for us this year was just consistency because we've only been in this position 90 days, obviously, we're not making huge programmatic changes to the city schools in our first 90 days. So when you look at our budget that you have been provided with, there's actually six budgets included. Our ESP budget, federal programs budget, school nutrition budget, and debt services budget are our smaller program budgets. There are almost no changes to those budgets at all. So I want to take a moment and talk you through two, our, obviously, our biggest budget, which is our general purpose operating budget, and then our ESER 3.0 or Biden Bucks, as the mayor refers to it. Those two. Some quick highlights on our GP budget. We are actually expecting a decrease in our state BEP allocation from what was budgeted for this current year. The BEP allocation from the state is our largest source of revenue. And really, that's due to the student growth we did not experience due to the pandemic. So Murfreesboro City Schools has historically had student growth year after year, which then leads to an increase in growth funds year after year. So when you look at what was budgeted for FY20, you'll see, FY21, I'm sorry, you'll see a little bit over $48 million that was budgeted. That included anticipated growth funds that typically come in. What we actually received this year was about $1 million less with $47,252,000. We had a decrease of about 258 students largely due to a, a large increase in homeschool students, a large increase in students who were held out, especially at the kindergarten grade level, and a lot of families just choosing to keep kids home. So whereas that is very atypical for Murfreesboro City Schools, we did experience that this year. So when you look at what we're estimating for our BEP revenue next year, you'll see a little bit over 48 million dollars. And that's largely impact due to the hold harmless legislation that was passed by our General Assembly. And I say that to point out, we are not the only district who lost students. In fact, the majority of districts across the state. In fact, if you have 145 districts in the state that lost students, there were seven that did not. The rest of us did. So the General Assembly really stepped up, helped us out, and said that no school district could receive less money from the state this year than they had in previous years regardless of enrollment. If they had not passed this, it would have cost us about $2 million. So it was a, it was a great thing for our General Assembly to pass for us. So even though we're seeing a decrease in our largest allocation from the BEP, we are expecting an increase in our expenditures and it's all personnel-related. So there is a 2.5% increase in medical insurance, which is being passed on from the state. Governor Lee has proposed and subsequently passed an increase in instructional salaries for our teachers in the district in those positions that are funded through the BEP. We will, of course, as we have historically done, recommend we pass any pay raise on to every employee in the district. And much like other occupations, we are on a step and ladder system, so we have just an increase in the years of experience our teachers have as well as higher degrees, which results in a higher average salary. So that increase in expenditures we're seeing, which we will show you here in a minute, again, is all due to that raise. I do think it's important to point out, I'm sorry.
Can I, can I back you up, just two slides there?
Yep.
So I'm not following something that you said, I'm just wanting to know I got, I know where this is. One more slide back. So you guys, it says you can't decrease the BEP. They, they passed something saying they couldn't decrease the BEP, but they did decrease the BEP?
No, so in last, yeah, let me, I'm sorry, let me rephrase that. So in last year's budget for the city schools, they budgeted both the BEP estimated allocation plus additional funds that they were anticipating coming in in February, which is called our growth funds for students that normally come in.
Gotcha, that's what we missed.
So we did not get those growth funds.
Good deal, sorry.
No, thank you for that question. So I think it's important to know when we talk about the raise, remember that in our city schools budget, 88% of our budget is personnel. So it's almost exclusively personnel. So when the governor does say, we're going to do a 4% raise, what he's really saying is this state is going to provide a 4% increase to the instructional component of our BEP. For us this year, that means we're going to receive about 860,000 more dollars in our allocation, which is already reflected in that 48 million there. Now, for, for Murfreesboro City School, that's a much larger impact, right? So we pay above the state salary schedule. So the starting teacher salary for the state is right around 36,000. We pay a little over 41,000 for a starting teacher salary. And so the 4% increase only goes on the state portion of that. In addition, if you follow much in education, you'll hear often us talk about the BEP formula is grossly undershowing what we actually takes to run a school system. And so because it does not include many essential personnel, those are all locally funded positions. And finally, because we extend that raise to all employees, so we are recommending, and our board has approved, a 3% raise to all MCS employees, which will take approximately 1.2 million dollars in funding that's not included in the BEP. I do want to talk briefly about projections because in the world of education, students equal money. So we are currently projecting for next year 458 additional students. That would take us to a district size of about 9,500, a little less than 9,500 students. That's actually what we were anticipated being at this year prior to COVID. However, we are being very conservative, and what I told my board and I'll continue to tell you, is we have a very conservative budget. So even though we are projecting the additional 458 students, that our anticipated revenue does not include growth funds. We are based off, our budget revenue is purely what the state has said they are funding it as, absent of any growth funds, even though we're projecting those funds. So I say that to say, if the students come, we will get additional revenues and we'll do those budget revisions. If they don't show up, and there is some question about that, we have about 11% of our students who are learning remotely, I'm sorry, 12% of our students who are learning remotely right now. We have about 266 more homeschool students than we had last year. The state will not be offering or allowing districts to offer a remote learning option next year. So there are some families who are making decisions about whether or not they feel comfortable bringing their children back to a school system or back into the school building. So even though we are anticipating that number, we're also being conservative and understanding they may not come. And so we're going to be prepared if they do not show up and prepared if they do. We will see, again, because of our conservative numbers, we're only actually increasing our teaching staff by three positions. And that is because last year, when those numbers decreased, we did not lay teachers off. We didn't know when the students were coming back, we didn't know if they'd come back at Christmas, when sanctions would be lifted. So there were so many unanswered questions, which is going to help us going into this year. So when you look at our staffing changes, and this is just a very broad overview of our staffing changes, again, when you look at classroom teaching positions, we're adding three, if more come, we will hire more. We actually went through our budget and we, when looking at our budget for this year, we had a reduction that we made in other district personnel of approximately $300,000 of positions that we looked at, made adjustments to for coming into the, the next year. I did say one of this, one of our goals was program consistency, which we really took seriously, not wanting to make a lot of changes so quickly, but these were positions we felt like through natural attrition, we could make, that we could be sustainable without these positions going into the next few years. One of the things you'll hear me talk about, and again, we refer to it as ESER money or the federal government grants, we are actually taking 10 positions and they're our academic interventionists, and we're actually moving those to our ESER budget. And it's a three-year time span we have to spend that money and we'll move those back over the next 10 years. And I'm really referring to this as a safety net, meaning if enrollment doesn't stabilize the way we intended to, and that's really what we're kind of looking at. This is our safety net until enrollment stabilizes and does what it has traditionally done, and we are completely post-pandemic. So we would normally never move positions to a one-time fund, but we actually have a transition plan to bring them back. And if the students come this year as we anticipate, they will be moved back very, very quickly. We are adding a purchasing, purchasing agent as well to help align all the purchases across the schools, which we look at will be a cost savings. When you look at our ESER 3.0 money, which is the money from the federal government, as a reminder, this is that one-time money. For the city schools, it's a little bit over 12 and a half million dollars that we'll be receiving. Just so we're clear, these are very tight restrictions. We have to be able to align them to the negative impact of COVID and we have to be able to make sure we're using to respond to the pandemic. So when we use and created our ESER 3.0 plan, and I want to emphasize, it's a plan, we are still receiving stakeholder feedback on that, we created that budget and our GP budget right next to each other. And we really used it as, for lack of a better word, the primary goal to stabilize our budget in case enrollment with uncertain enrollment numbers. And it also allowed us to get some jumpstarts on a programs that we were looking to implement, but would not have been able to due to our decrease in BEP allocations. So our overall strategy for our ESER money, we have four primary areas we're looking at. We're focusing on academic, student readiness, educators, and foundations. I want to again emphasize, relief information is still coming out from the state and federal government. Sometimes it's hard for us to keep up with how much is coming out at the pace it's coming out of. So you as a city council and our board, I've warned them, should expect to see budget revisions around this. So let me give you an example. We have budgeted for summer school. That budget includes, we're running a full summer school program for six weeks. That includes teachers, administrators, office staff, EAs, bus drivers, transportation, crossing guards, school nurses. Well, the state has just recently released a grant that says, we're going to pay for the transportation. So while we have to go back to that budget, we're going to have to do some amendments, we're going to have to revise that budget. In addition, we just learned of another grant that they're going to provide us if we as a district provide COVID testing to our staff, which we are already doing. So we are, of course, going to take advantage of that grant. That's going to cause some budget revisions as this new money comes in. So we are going to be sending those through to the board and to the council as soon as we get that information. As far as our revenue increases, as I spoke, we do have that decrease in our BEP allocation, but we are anticipating an increase of approximately $900,000 in additional local tax revenues of property tax, sales tax, and the other taxes we look at. And we've also been able, as we look through the budget this year, to identify some additional sources of revenue related to federal grants, and that would be our title grants, not the ESER money, that have not been utilized before. So that's in some new revenues that we've identified as well. So overall, when you look at our budget, we are estimating about 90 million, 210,000 dollars in revenue, which is an increase from last year. We are, it includes 92 million, 879,000 dollars in expenditures, which is also an increase. All of those are related almost exclusively to the raise in medical insurances. And we are using 2.6 million in unassigned fund balance for both for school operational expenses. And I know that was very fast, so I am happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Could you give us those numbers because I know we had anticipated on our summer school numbers, what was anticipated and what they?
Yeah, so we were anticipating about 700, our goal was 750 kids in summer school and at last count, we had over 1,800 enrolled.
I'd like to know.
Yeah, so, and that 1,800, of course, takes teachers, so over 200 of our teachers are working this summer. We have administrators in every building, so even after the year we've had, our teachers are stepping up and making sure our kids get what they need.
Chad, it was, or not Chad, Trey, it was this time last year that we, getting old. Linda, you know, we were feeding 38 sites this time last year, breakfast and lunch. So we've moved in tremendous direction. Last night I was at the Rutherford County Virtual High School graduation for the Trailblazers at, at the Fountain. So do you feel like you've got everything you need moving forward to next year?
We do. Like I said, we were very conservative in our budget. We were very conservative in both the revenue side and on the expenses side to make sure that coming out of an unprecedented year, and to be honest, not knowing what next year's going to hold, we did not want to be in a position where we had overextended ourselves. And so we made the necessary adjustments to our budget we needed to so that regardless of what happens, I feel like we've put ourselves in a very good place going into next year.
Okay, great.
Trey, I've been hearing a lot of good things about you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Thank you.
You walked into a time, a trying time, you know. So you're doing a great job.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thanks for not intimidating us with push-ups. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Maybe next time.
All right, any other questions? All right, we are going to have to shut down for our sixth meeting. And then we can continue any changes to the budget at our next meeting. All right, we'll stand adjourned.